Hello, everyone, and welcome to a new edition of FYI Oxbridge. I'm your host, Barry Giles, the station manager here at Oxbridge Community Television. FYI Oxbridge is a program about the people, places, and events happening here in our town of Oxbridge. And today, my guest is Ed Mahary, who is the Town Moderator for the town of Oxbridge. Ed, thank you for joining me, appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
So, as I start with all my guests, why don't you just let everybody know who you are, introduce yourself, and for those who don't know.
Again, name's Ed Mahary. We have lived in town for 40 years, have been involved in local government for the last 20, the first 10 as a member of the Finance Committee, and the last 10 as a Town Moderator. We're serving our fourth term as moderator.
Great. Thank you for doing that, stepping up to help out the town with that. What are the responsibilities of the Town Moderator?
There are essentially two responsibilities. The biggest one, and the most important one, is obviously the running of Town Meeting. Would you like me to speak to you, or?
Yeah, you can speak to me.
Thank you, I'm not sure. Town Meeting, which is obviously where the town gets together at least twice a year to make decisions mostly about the budget, about capital expenditures, and zoning changes in terms of how your property or the property in town is zoned. The second responsibility is the appointment of four members of the Finance Committee, which is a challenge, because there are people, are difficult in terms of finding someone who's willing to step up, because they do a very, very difficult job.
Yeah, it is, volunteerism seems to be tough here in town. Everybody has a busy life, and, you know, I know public access relies a lot on volunteers, and sometimes we have to step up and take on to that. So, okay, so let's talk about Town Meeting. We have a Fall Town Meeting coming up, October 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Valley Chapel. What are the procedures for Town Meeting, for residents to come in?
Well, let's break it down into two parts. The procedures for Town Meeting, all you simply have to be is a voter registered in town, come to the meeting, as you indicated, it's at 7 o'clock, there are people who will check you in. We, in Oxbridge, are very fortunate in the sense that we have a large auditorium in which to work, that will seat 1,000 people, and even maybe more important, we have something called electronic voting, where everyone is given a little clicker, and when it comes time to vote, you either hit yes or no, and it's within 15 seconds or less, it's tabulated and shown up on the screen for everyone to see the result of the vote itself. We will go through the articles, we'll hear first from the sponsor of the article, in terms of why they want this action taken by the part of the town, it needs to be seconded. We generally hear from someone who might be in opposition, in terms of seeing why they think this is a bad idea. Then we'll hear recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and if it involves something like zoning, we'll also hear from the Planning Board as well, in that regard. We'll then open it up to open debate, for people to say yea or nay, and when we're done with that, we'll actually take a vote. Most votes require a simple majority, for example, for the Spring Town Meeting, for on the budget, it's a simple majority, for things like zoning, it's a 2/3 or a higher standard in that regard, so that's that. Now, the second part is, obviously, we're dealing with this terrible virus, and we were able to conduct the Spring Town Meeting in, hopefully, what was a safe environment for everybody, and talking to Dr. Tapscott, he indicated that there was nobody who was at that meeting, or came out of that meeting with COVID, so that was good, and we'll probably use the same procedures. We put on the town's website, and I'd ask people if they have a chance to look at it, it's a little blurb called "What to Expect at the Fall Town Meeting." It's written by Stephen Setti, Town Manager, and myself, and the first thing is to make sure that you are healthy, and because we don't want anybody coming to the meeting who might spread the virus, and there's nine different items here to check on yourself in terms of that. Once you get to the meeting, though, we will want to ask everyone to wear their face mask, and keep at least six feet apart. Stephen and I, and anyone else who would like to, will be at the Valley Chapel on Tuesday to put down markers, as in terms of where six feet represents, and if you aren't able to make the meeting, then obviously, it's going to be on cable access, cable, channel 191.
Correct, yeah, we broadcast it and stream it live also for residents that can't make it to the meeting.
So, one of the things that we're going to do a little bit differently than we did last time, is that we're going to ask those people from the same household to sit in the middle aisle, if you're familiar with Valley Chapel, there's a middle aisle, which is fairly large, and two aisles on left and right. So, people who are in the, again, same household, you know, same sort of incubator setup, will be asked to sit there, again, six feet apart, and those who are come as individuals will be asked to sit on the left or right, so that they can do that. And then, for those who are concerned, and this is very much a concern of mine, about being at a large public meeting, we're going to reserve the balcony for them to go up and be isolated from the rest of the group, in that regard, so that's it. My concern is, frankly, that we have a lot of people, particularly seniors, who have taken great interest in town, but have been warned not to come to Town Meeting. In fact, I have something here from the, from, you know, it's Department of Health, that says, "Persons who are particularly vulnerable to COVID-19 according to the Center of Disease Control, due to age or underlying conditions, are encouraged to stay home." I hate that, I honestly do hate that. I think that's a denial of somebody's ability to vote on something important, and I would like to figure out a way to do that for the, and so for the moment, we're actually going to try to just say, "Come to Town Meeting, we'll get you a space upstairs where you can be by yourself, and you can still participate," but hopefully without the risk that you might feel would prevent you from being there.
Great, yeah, you just answered two other questions I had, so.
I can repeat myself.
Very thorough.
Just talked to my wife.
Yeah, well, some of the changes, you know, also made is possible length, you know, can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely, that's a good, that's actually a good question for two points. One is, at the Spring Town Meeting, we had a recommendation from the Board of Health to limit the meeting to 20 minutes, excuse me, 2 hours, or 120 minutes. The Board of Selectmen, I think, in their wisdom, said, "Look, let's limit it to 90 minutes," which we, actually, at the very start of the meeting, said we're going to limit it to 9 minutes, if you, I'll digest, digress, I guess I should say, for a minute, and that is, if you recall, we were almost at the end, and instead of reconvening the meeting at another time, we got the approval to basically finish the last two articles, it took maybe 10, 15 minutes, and that was good. This time, we don't have any formal recommendation from the Board of Health, but I do have a gentleman's agreement, if I can use a person's agreement, if that's politically correct, with Dr. Tapscott, that we'll try to limit the meeting to 90 minutes, and I go through the formality of saying, you know, we're going to end it at 90 minutes, and that I, as the moderator, will, you know, keep an eye on the clock, and then I will confer with him, or the Board of Health, when we get, if we get to that 90-minute mark. Now, the second part, which is actually going to work in our favor, is that, and Stephen will speak to this in more detail, it turns out that the Worcester Telegram Gazette screwed up on publishing the public hearing for the Planning Board, and as a result of that, it was never published, therefore, they cannot, because it hasn't been published, they cannot make their recommendation, and because of that, we cannot actually look at the articles.
Okay.
Because it would be out of order, it doesn't meet the requirements that are necessary for us to vote on those. Stephen has recommended, and I think it's a fine idea, that we do everything on the warrant, except for those four articles that relate to the Planning Board, give them a chance to have the public hearing published, hold the public hearing, make their recommendations, and right now, we're talking about re-conve, ending the meeting, and then reconvening it on the November 18th, at Valley Chapel.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then I think we can probably get through Articles 1 through 11 and 16, in the 90-minute period of time we're talking about.
Yeah, usually, Fall Town Meeting is a little bit lighter than Spring Town Meeting, because we're not dealing with such a large budget.
Correct.
Process, and so on.
Yeah.
Great, I think you touched base on everything, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I just want to make sure that people feel comfortable in terms of turning out, participation is important, we have about 10,000 voters in town, you know, we average maybe about 150 people at Town Meeting, I would like us to do better, we certainly have the facility for it, thanks to Valley Chapel, and we certainly have the ability to vote, and make it a lot quicker than it was in the old days, when we had to either raise our hand, and whatever.
Yes, I remember those days.
So, yes, again, again, participation's really important.
Great, all right, Ed, thank you very much for joining me.
Well, thank you for having me again, and hopefully, I didn't screw up too badly.
No, you did, you did just fine, thanks. Okay, we'll be right back with the Town Manager, Steve Setti, to discuss the Town Warrant. Hello, and welcome back to FYI Oxbridge, I'm your host, Barry Giles, Station Manager here at Oxbridge Community Television. We are back with Town Manager, Stephen Setti. How you doing, Stephen?
Very good, how are you?
Good, welcome back.
Thank you.
This is your second.
I know.
Second trip back.
I know, I should be a pro at this now.
There you go. We're going to talk about the Fall Annual Town Meeting Warrant, once again, it is Tuesday, October 27th, at 7:00 PM, at the Valley Chapel, which is on, I never mentioned this, 14 Hunter Road, here in Oxbridge, Mass. So, let's jump right into it, let's talk about Article 1, Transfer to Stabilization.
Okay, this is usually a housekeeping-type article, basically, what the town does is, we have a stabilization account, currently, we keep $2.5 million in that account, and, well, actually, we can't have it go any lower than $2.5 million. Currently, in the account, there's $5,67,092, and that sounds like a big number compared to, like I said, 2.5, and the reason for that is, that's two years of free cash that was transferred into the account at the Spring Town Meeting, and the reason we hadn't taken any money out of it, because we were waiting to fall, to see how, you know, COVID affected the town, to do any, any other capital-type expenditures, so that's why that account's so high. What we're going to do on this article, though, is move additional free cash into that account, and I'm proud to say, and this is the work of the finance team we have at Town Hall now, that we got our free cash certified earlier than, I think, that the town is used to, and as a result of that, we have $2,342,575 in additional free cash to move into this account. So, the stabilization account will have a number of $7,409,767.13, once we do that.
Great, and of course, the Finance Committee recommendation is 5-0, and the Board of Selectmen recommendation is 4-0.
Right.
So, great, all right, moving on, Article 2, Transfer to Capital Stabilization Fund.
So, the next step, you know, in the process, as we go through Town Meeting, is to fund our capital stabilization account, that allows us to do any kind of capital purchases, or any kind of, you know, capital projects that the town might have. As I mentioned earlier, normally, we'd have $2.5 million in the stabilization account. The Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, and myself all feel that that's not enough money to keep in stabilization, we're a $55 million budget now, so that's a small percentage of our budget. As we've had discussions over the last year with financial advisors, and rating agencies, and so forth, what they suggest is, we have a number more in line between 8% and 12% of our budget. So, because we have such a healthy stabilization account right now, we've made the decision to move that $2.5 million to $4 million, so we're going to keep $4 million in general stabilization, and move anything above that into capital stabilization. So, the vote at Town Meeting will be to transfer and to appropriate the sum of $3,409,767.13 from general stabilization to capital stabilization, and that will set us up for the things that we have moving forward.
Great, and the Finance Committee recommendation was 5-0, and Board of Selectmen recommended also 4-0.
And just so everyone knows, this warrant, in the various articles, will be on the Town Website.
Yes.
So, people can get that.
Yep, great, all right, Article 3, Acceptance of Stabilization Fund Provisions.
Right, this is just, again, a formality, if you read the article, it says to accept the fourth paragraph of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, and what that does, it allows us to, you know, to dedicate funds, without having to have any other appropriation, to certain stabilization accounts, and there's a percentage that you can have, it's not less than 25%, that you can dedicate to that, and again, we need to adopt this, to allow us to do certain other things, that you'll see as Town Meeting moves along.
Great.
And once again, it was favorable action.
Favorable action, and so on. All right, moving along, Article 4.
Okay, so, we assume we've approved Article 3.
Yep.
Article 4 is a article that came through the Capital Planning Committee, and what the Capital Planning Committee is looking at is dedicating, without further appropriation, 50% of the annual cannabis tax revenue that we get to capital stabilization. So, use this year as an example, this year, we have about $400,000 that came into that account, so automatically, $200,000 of it would go into capital stabilization, and the reasoning behind this is to begin to build our capital stabilization as time goes on, so that we have money to do additional roadwork, to do additional capital projects. And again, this was met favorably with both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and obviously, the Capital Planning Committee, and I think the Finance Committee, you know, liked the fact that they, the Capital Planning Committee brought this forward to do that.
Great, great, okay, Article 5, Capital Purchases.
Okay, so, the Capital Planning Committee has been meeting right along since, actually, prior to the Spring Town Meeting, and then, obviously, we moved capital purchases to this meeting, so they picked up their meetings again, and went through every department that's not an enterprise fund, all the departments, various capital needs, so they met with the school department, the police, the fire, Department of Public Works, the library, Council on Aging, and, you know, and then, Town Services, and then, based on that, recommended the projects that we have, that are listed in the warrant, to be moved forward. There's a couple of projects that were also, projects that have been previously voted, that they voted to not fund, more because they felt there was enough money in the, you know, to those projects already, that they could, that they could continue to do work without funding for this fiscal year. So, there's four vehicles that we're looking to purchase, a new fire engine, new, purchase of Engine 3 at the Fire Department, and a utility truck for the Fire Department. Engine 3 is going to be $720,000, and utility truck will be $65,000. Both have reached the end of useful life, need to be replaced. The Fire Department, though, is recommending that the purchase of the new truck is going to be a combined rescue pumper, so we're going to eliminate two trucks from the current fleet. One will be traded in, and we're going to get a significant trade back on the other one, so the reduction in the fleet will produce annual savings, while, you know, some operational efficiency. And the Department of Public Works is looking to purchase two trucks as well, one is a 2022 Mack Truck, it's a six-wheel truck, at $229,452, and a 2022 Ford F-350 utility truck as well. The truck that the DPW is looking to replace is a 1990 truck, so we've gotten 30 years of use out of the truck.
Yeah, I guess we did, we did, huh?
Right, and the utility truck, again, is a 2008, reached the end of its useful life, needs to be replaced, and the six-wheel truck comes complete with a plow and accessory packages, and then, obviously, the four-wheel drive on the utility truck, so both can be used for a number of different things. In addition to that, the Police Department, in their evidence room, has an issue with keeping the temperature of the evidence room where it needs to be to preserve evidence, so we're recommending a purchase and installation of what is called a mini-split unit, rather than do a complete HVAC replacement, a mini-split will serve its purpose, that's going to be for $10,500. And then, there's two additional roofs that are being recommended, and this is from the School Department that are in, needs, they're actually roof restorations, rather than replacements. The Taft School Roof in the amount of $666,300, and the Whiten School Roof at $560,000. Now, the total amount that we're going to move out of capital stabilization, to appropriate for these capital projects, is $1,242,135, and somebody's going to look at the math in that and say, "Wait a minute, you have a truck for Fire Department at 720, and you have a truck at the DPW 229, there's another million dollars that's missing."
Right.
Well, our financial advisors, after some discussion with them, basically, we were looking at either doing purchase into a capital lease, rather than expending all our money that's available in the capital stabilization, or financing a different way, what they suggested is, we purchased the vehicles with what's called a bond anticipation note, and what that means is, down the road, we will take out a bond, but we'd like to do that as part of a larger bond, with, you know, some roads and some other infrastructure as part of it. So, all we need to do is pay the interest payments on the band, for up to three years, but we think it'll only be a two-year period that we're going to be doing that, but because of our credit rating, because of some of the other actions that we're looking to take, and all that, we're able to borrow, you know, the money for the band, at a half a percent interest.
Wow.
So, basically, what that works out to, for the two trucks of the Fire Department, it's $3,925 in interest, and for the DPW trucks, $1,410.
That's great.
So, yeah, and obviously, that allows us to come back in the spring, with some additional projects that we'll be able to fund at that point.
Do you know if we've ever done that before, in a band?
I don't know if the town's ever done a band before, but, like I said, this is, you know, I think, you know, our credit-worthiness right now, and the fact that we will be in position to do something down the road, makes this a good choice for us right now.
Great, great, that's awesome, and that, it looks like the Finance Committee, favorable action 5-0, DPW was favorable for 5-0, Police Station HVAC was 5-0, looked like they, favorable action on everything.
Except for the doors.
Except for the doors, okay.
And I mentioned that upfront, that, you know, all committees decide.
Oh, okay, there we go, I did, okay, I'm sorry, I misread that.
It's okay.
Unfavorable action 5-0, okay, and Board of Selectmen, once again, favorable action about Fire Department, DPW, Police Station, and then, unfavorable on the doors, also.
Yep, and favorable on the two roofs.
Right, okay, moving on, we'll talk about Article 6, Establish an Awareness Task Force.
Yeah, for Drug Awareness Task Force.
Yep.
Right, as you know, we do get, you know, impact money from cannabis, you know, from other of the various businesses in town, and we hadn't had anything like this. I proposed this, in a previous town I was in, we had a similar program, basically, we authorized $1 from each resident in the town, and that went towards funding the Drug Awareness Task Force, and it was supplemented by funds from a grant. Here, we're looking to fund it, and actually, I had asked for $5,000, but both the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, said we should only put $5,000, we should put $10,000 into it, because of what it can do. Obviously, you know, anytime you lose any resident in town to a drug overdose, or have any other, you know, issues that may occur, you know, that's one too many, and this gives us some opportunities at the younger levels, in the schools, and, you know, high schools and so forth, to do some things, you know, there's some really great activities that can be funded through that. Obviously, it allows us now to even look into some other grant programs through the District Attorney's Office and so forth, that might be able to match some of those dollars, so we'll be able to fund this, and hopefully, do some good things with it.
Great, now, this, I don't mean to be jumping ahead, or something like that, later on, there is another article towards the anti-citizens petition.
Yeah.
To talk about that type of funding, we'll get to that.
We can get to that, yep.
Yep, all right, as you said, favorable action from both boards on that. Article 7, Employee Compensation Study.
Right, this was something that hasn't been done in quite some time here in town, I think I really, might even go back to seven or eight years that it hasn't been done, might even be a little bit longer than that.
Let me think, been here 17 years, we've done it twice, yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, so, and I know this was an article that maybe two years ago was up for consideration, and it didn't pass at Town Meeting, because the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen didn't, recommended unfavorable action, and it was more because of the way the study was going to be done. What I proposed, and I put an RFQ out to some companies to, that do this type of work, was to do a compensation study that was also going to look at total compensation, you know, we have certain things that are part of our benefit package and so forth, that are, you know, very favorable, and, you know, and when we take all of those things into consideration, I think we have to match up just what people take home every week, and so they're going to do a study that's going to include all of that, and see where we fall versus other communities. Now, you know, I guess I should state upfront that I don't think we're ever going to be the highest-paid community, for lots of reasons, but I don't think, you know, we should be near the bottom of the pack either, I think we have some really good, quality employees, and unfortunately, we're train and drain right now, so we, and especially over at the, say, the Water Department, and the Sewer Department, places where there's not as many licensed operators, and in some of our other departments as well, that, you know, we train people, they're doing a great job, and then, because they can walk into another job making considerably a lot more money.
Right.
You know, they leave, but I think if we look at our total package with compensation, with benefits, and so forth, and we put it as a package, we can make our jobs more attractive.
Right.
You know, my goal would be somewhere to be, you know, above the middle of the pack, maybe the 60, 70% of all comparable towns, so it puts us very competitive with everybody else, so we're looking to do that, and the committees have, the Finance Committee recommended up to $45,000, you know, I backed that down a little bit, based on, you know, some of the quotes I've seen, you know, and what we're asking is to transfer $45,000, and it's going to come from, you know, look at it and say, "It's an odd account, why is it coming from street lighting?" And I can explain that real quickly, is that the street, we recently went through a program with National Grid, where we converted all the streetlights in town to LED lights, and obviously, there's going to be considerable savings, well, when we did the budget, that program hadn't been fully implemented, but once COVID came, Grid wanted to keep their crews working, so they assigned people to do it, so it got done a lot quicker than we thought.
Great.
So, there's evaluating it, where we are now in the budget, we feel that we can transfer money from that account to pay for this study right now, so we don't have to appropriate any further money through taxation to the taxpayers, but the other thing is, you know, there's a caveat to this, is that next year, people see a considerable reduction in this line, so our budget will be reduced by it next year.
Right, great, and of course, favorable action from both boards on that.
Yep.
Article 8, Lease of Surplus Property, 59 Hazel Street.
Right, this article's going to be withdrawn.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, it was already approved.
Wonderful.
And it's really to put a cell tower up in that area, so, and that's, that agreement's being negotiated at this point.
Okay, great, and Article 9, Establish, Re-Adopt OPAP Trust.
Okay, we've, again, this is another article we've already done, we did, but we never established the trust.
Okay.
And now, working with our financial advisors, we have that, and we're able to do that, but we need to, you know, adopt this again, to allow us to move forward. The commentary, if people go online to look at the warrant, I think the commentary does a great job summing up why we would do it, so, you know, it's a good move for us. OPAP, just for people, if people don't know, is Other Post-Employment Benefits, and the other post-employment benefits are things that we are, you know, financially liable for somewhere down the road, when people retire and things, it's all based on actuarial assumptions, so when people see what, you know, the numbers approaching, you know, $50, $60 million liabilities, we have to figure out, okay, we have to pay for those somehow.
Right.
So, you know, we have some strategies in place to do this, but this is the first step in that.
Great, Article 10.
Yeah.
Voluntary donation to Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund.
Right, this is being proposed by the Veteran Services Director, Carl Bradshaw. Basically, it's a check-off on your, when you get your tax bill, you check off, had a dollar or whatever, to a fund that goes into supporting local veterans who are in need, it could be for a number of different things, but that's what this fund is going to be established for and used for, and, you know, I think it's a great, a great thing that we can do as a town.
Absolutely, we'd definitely be supporting our veterans on that. All right, moving on to Article 11, Grant of Easement for West River Pump Station.
Yeah, and all this is, this is a formality, it's to allow the electric company to have an easement to run infrastructure through to the pump station, so that we can allow the pump station. the pump station to work.
There you go.
So it's kind of simple. Yeah, it's kind of simple. So hopefully, that, you know, that doesn't get too much pushback.
Okay. Now, going into Article 12. Ed had mentioned, he already spoke about the mishap with the posting for the hearings and things like that. So Article 12 is to amend the zoning bylaws by amending the zone table of use, regulations in zoning table.
Yeah.
So what, if you want to talk about that?
Just real quickly on this one. We adopted a zone change to the zoning table for a multi-town, multi-town district. It's a district that we would share with Douglas, Sutton, and Northbridge. When we did the use table and some other dimensional requirements, one of the things we didn't include were agricultural uses, cemeteries, and religious, you know, religious buildings and so forth. They needed to be added in there. So the Attorney General said, until we can actually apply everything to this mixed-town, multi-town, mixed-commerce district, that's what it officially is. Once we can apply this type of zoning, we had to include those things. So really, this is more of a housekeeping thing.
Okay.
The dimensional requirements are going to allow us to move from a current 45-foot height to 60 feet. And that allows us to be competitive with other communities that are starting to get more warehousing-type businesses in. I know the question came up when we were talking about this at the Finance Committee, do we have a fire truck that can go 45 feet, and our ladder truck reaches 105? So yes, we can. So we'd be more than enough. So it's not going to mean anything other than the fact that some buildings could be a little bit tall.
Okay. Article 13, Another Zoning Bylaw.
Yeah. These still need to be reviewed by the Planning Board, and that's some of the reason, you know, when you mentioned the issue with the Telegram and Gazette, they did not publish the public hearing notice to address these. So some of these things still need more review. Same thing with 14 and 15.
Okay.
So I'll defer to the Planning Board for these. It's potential that Article 13 could even, if not get withdrawn, a lot of what's in Article 13 might be covered in Article 12.
Okay.
It might be a little bit of redundancy, but, you know, that's still to be determined. But like I said, the other, and then the other two are citizens petitions, but they have to do with making certain streets public ways. And so the Finance Committee still needs to weigh in on those.
Okay. So those will be passed over for now, and then, okay. And our final article, as I mentioned before, citizens petition to no longer charge cannabis retail business a community impact fee.
Right. I believe you had, you might have had a select board member, Mandilly, who's the citizen sponsor of this, and Caroline Franklin, and had some discussion on this. And, you know, and obviously, you know, this is, the town is allowed to, through its host community agreements, to charge a fee to any cannabis businesses that want to come and locate in the town of Uxbridge. Most times, you know, this, you know, and I guess the argument, you know, against this would be, well, other businesses don't have to do that.
Right.
Right. But there's a limited number of licenses that we have. We actually voted as a town to limit the number of retail licenses to three licenses. And this really is more with retail stores versus manufacturers or cultivators.
Yep.
But we only have three licenses, so it's very competitive. It's similar to, you know, a license if someone has a liquor store or something, that's, those are limited as well. So basically, you know, until the state changes that, these are the rules that we work under. Now, the state may come back and say, yes, there's no, you can't charge an impact fee any longer. They could also say, we could renegotiate, you know, some of those agreements, whatever it might be. Obviously, whatever it is, we'd be open to. I know the bigger concern as well, what is the impact? You know, early on, people thought it was going to be law enforcement.
Right.
You know, people are going to be trying to break into these facilities and so forth, but the security they have is unbelievable. And also, I should say that Caroline and, you know, other of the retailers have been great partners to the town. So this is, you know. But there are other impacts. The other impacts to the town are things like our water, you know, water and being able to deliver water to certain places, our roads. Those are all infrastructure impacts that, you know, affects everybody.
Right.
So my feeling is those impacts are still, you know, allowable under this type of impact fee. We mentioned earlier, you know, we had the, you know, the drug task force.
Correct.
You know, it possibly could mean that, you know, you know, there's other things that we might be able to do and fund through those type of impact fees. But that's kind of where, you know, where this is. It's, like I said, I think there's more to come on this from the Cannabis Control Commission and what they might do with the state.
Right.
But again, Steven and I have talked about this many times, respect the fact that, you know, he's bringing it forward. And the reasons why, I've had some discussions with Caroline Franklin and her husband.
Yep.
You know, and discussed it with him as well. And, you know, it's not one of those things that everybody's, you know, having a lot of headbutting on.
Right. Everybody kind of understands.
Understands what everybody's position is, and we'll see where it goes.
Yeah. Once again, we had them as guests on the show and so on. We talked about, you know, the impact for them and things like that and so on. And like I said, at the beginning, there were a lot of confusion. They were making things as they went along and so on. So like you said, it could be something that could be negotiated out completely, or the state might just come and say, we're done.
Yeah, and they could end it, and then, you know, we work under those arrangements.
Exactly.
But again, I just want for everybody who will be watching, is to let everybody know we have great partners.
Right.
And, you know, and we'll work with them whatever we can.
Right, exactly. Great. Well, that wraps up the warrant. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Similar to what Ed said, you know, obviously, we're doing everything we can to keep everybody safe.
Yep.
We will also do some contact tracing. So, you know, in each section of the auditorium, we'll have a clipboard with, you know, all we're asking people is to put their name, phone number. That's it. We're not going to ask for a lot of other information. But if for some reasons there is a positive case and people are sitting in the middle section, at least we know who we need to contact.
Right.
If they were sitting on one of the outer sections, we would know that as well. The nice thing is, we do have, at the venue, we do have a balcony where we can isolate.
Right.
I know one question came up about, well, what about if people refuse to wear a mask? Well, we can put people up. And this happened at the last meeting, so we were able to isolate people, you know, upstairs, you know, the person upstairs that didn't want to wear a mask. But hopefully, everybody will comply, you know, with what the guidelines are. I think by taking the four articles, actually, five articles out of this warrant, that, you know, we should be within an hour to an hour and a half timeframe. So, you know, I think we all can, you know.
Breathe easy here.
Well, we could all wear our masks and be, you know, for an hour and be in good shape.
Absolutely. Great. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For joining to talk about the warrant. And once again, Fall Annual Town Meeting is Tuesday, October 27th at 7:00 PM at the Valley Chapel on 14 Hunter Road here in Uxbridge. Thanks again for watching. Once again, my name is Barry Giles, host of the show. If you know anybody who's interested in being on the show, talk about issues in town or anything that's going on to help promote what your organization is doing, you can feel free to contact me. You go to the town website at uxbridge-ma.gov. Look for cable access. We'll direct you to my email. Once again, thank you for watching.